Go on.
That's okay.
It doesn't do us any good.
I was excited that Paul actually had his name on the light there. Good morning and welcome to the February 27, 2020 Business Meeting. And I'd like the County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes Chair. First, our staff support today Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, and Commissioner Savis is out of the office today to work with the family issue that he has taken care of. But our role call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'd like to announce that the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority for the next item. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds. This is his very last meeting and his replacement's out in the audience. So Paul, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say I've enjoyed being Resident Commissioner and that after losing everything, I felt like I couldn't be useful again. Then this came up and it feels good to be useful again, to have that. When you lose everything and you start from scratch, you just, you don't feel good. But I do appreciate this and appreciate Housing Authority that's done so much for me and appreciate all your commissions. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve in the Board with you all. Thank you very much.
It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you and you do mean something and you have had an impact and you have made your mark on society.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you.
That's nice to hear.
All right. With that, we'll ask the Clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, we have two items on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Appointment of Ann Leenstra as Resident Commissioner on the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board and approval to execute a grant agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Healthies Share to administer a pilot rent assistant housing program.
Do any Commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's removed and seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion?
So I just want to say that on this consent agenda is a very amazing item regarding the pilot rent assistance program, which is quite a celebration and a success for our entire region. And I see that Ruth is out here in the community and other folks and I just want to say thank you for all the collaboration and hard work.
And also, Ann is out in the audience. She'll be our new Commissioner and I'd like to, after we vote on this, walk you aboard. All right, those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. And we'd like to take a picture, is that right?
We got one more presentation.
Oh, okay. All right, oh, I didn't see that. Housing Authority Presentation. So you have to stick around. You have to stick around a minute.
So Chair, this is a presentation honoring the Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds for his service to Clackamas County. We have Rich Swift, the Director of Health Housing and Human Services, and Jill Smith, the Housing Authority Director, to present.
Thank you Administrator Schmidt. Good morning Chair Bernard and the Housing Authority Board. I'm Richard Swift, the Director of Health Housing and Human Services. I just have a couple of brief words and those are really about exactly what that screen says, which is, "Thank you Paul." You know, Commissioner Reynolds was an enormous asset to us on the Housing Authority Board. I am going to miss him greatly in terms of the lifting that he did related to housing and also houseless issues for the county. But I also understand he wants to take a break and he will actually be joining us on our Advisory Board. So he will continue his work and his mission related to housing and I can't thank him enough. So thank you very much Commissioner Reynolds. And so what I want to do is turn it over to Jill Smith, our Housing Director for the County, and she will walk us through this presentation.
Thank you for this opportunity Commissioners and this is all about saying thank you to Paul. Paul has been an example of what we all could do with volunteering. I mean, he's volunteered through hardships, he's been so committed, so responsible. It's been an honor to get to know him over this last year as I've been in this new role. And there's just a few things I wanted to point out as we recognize some of his accomplishments as he's served on this Board with his fellow Commissioners. When you're a Housing Authority Board Member, there's certain areas of responsibility that you take on and Paul has embraced those. As he's set policy, Paul, along with fellow Commissioners, has approved six annual plans that contain the policies and the approval needed from head to make all of the decisions that affect thousands of folks that we serve. Paul has approved seven Housing Authority budgets and he has participated in seven Resident Advisory Board meetings where he's helped his fellow residents and participants understand sometimes complex regulations that are imposed upon us from head and we've greatly appreciated his impact and help with those discussions. He's also had a lot of impact on multiple housing projects, which is something that's really escalating and he has contributed to. Shea ME, several years ago, Paul approved dedicating 20 vouchers to that project, which is run by Central City Concern and serves really high needs folks with wraparound services. Paul was a part of the decision to provide 21 vouchers to the Town Center Courtyard that's also run by Central City Concern, helping families who are trying to stay clean and sober have wraparound services. They're engaging in employment and transitioning into other housing. Paul was integral in making decisions to put public housing operating funds and vouchers into that property. Paul was part of the decision to help with funding and vouchers for the Northwest Housing Alternatives, family shelter and the units there. The vouchers that were contributed to that project allowed NHA to transition families that were served in the shelter into the housing right on the campus. And we all remember Rosewood Station. I watched in the audience. That was a challenging project and Paul was right at the center of it. And I actually remember many comments that he made reminding us all of the experience of someone who's faced homelessness, big contributor. We committed public housing disposition funds as well as 20 vouchers to that project. Paul helped to approve the Hillside Master Plan with an estimated 600 total units and he, of course, was an integral part of the approval of the 100 units that will be preserved with construction starting in April for Hillside Manor. Clayton Moore Commons, we just celebrated. Paul was a part of all of the commitment for vouchers and funding for that property and he was part of the authorization and approval for Metro Housing Bonds for our Webster Road redevelopment. And I could go on and on. So we're excited to share, Richard already shared, that Paul has committed to be part of the Housing Advisory Board, which will oversee and make recommendations to the Housing Authority Board for projects to be developed with the Metro Housing Bond. So we aren't letting him go. We're going to keep utilizing the skills he brings to our table. Paul's been part of celebrations. He's been part of challenges the Housing Authority has faced. And we want to thank him. There's no way to say thank you. Paul, we truly appreciate your service.
Well, thank you very much.
And the good thing is, you never had to run for this job. All right, well, again, thank you very much for your years of dedication. I think that little presentation really shows you the impact that you've had, the projects you participated in and, you know, we can't say thanks enough. And the pay is zero and a three and a half percent raise next year. And thank you so very much.
Well, thank you. I had no idea how much that I've been part of. I just liked showing up and being here. So I had no idea. But I'm glad I was able to help out. Thank you.
And now you know you had an impact.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah, and it isn't stopping because we're still utilizing all of your expertise on the other committees. So don't think you're getting away from us.
Well, one time I didn't think I had any impact for anything and after my back surgery and I couldn't work, I thought, well, that was it. Until Resident Commissioner Flyer came in the mail and everything changed. And I'm glad it did.
Great.
We're going to take a photo and we have a certificate that you use.
All right. We're going to come down. So Paul, I'm going to read it. Paul, Commissioner Paul Reynolds, Housing Authority of Clackamas County. For his outstanding dedication and service to Clackamas County, we wish to extend our sincere appreciation and sign the 27th day of February 2020. So thank you very much.
Wow, thank you.
And we're going to get you a picture too.
Thank you very much.
The sixth Commissioner.
Sounds like a movie, doesn't it?
All right, thank you.
I think that's a novel you could write.
Interesting novel, wasn't it?
And with that, we need to announce that the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of this meeting. And first, we have Ruth Atkins and Alyssa Craigie. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Good morning Chair Bernard and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ruth Atkins. I'm with Kaiser Permanente. I'm here with Alyssa Craigie from Health Share. And we just wanted to come and express our appreciation and excitement about this partnership in the pilot rent assistance project with the County and it's actually a tri-county project. The investment of $5 million from Kaiser Permanente will help launch a regional supportive housing impact fund administered by Health Share, which Alyssa can speak more to in a moment. But we're thrilled to be the first major investment in a new coordinated effort across the counties to address the housing needs of medically vulnerable people and really add to the existing and growing work in this space to address the crisis. Really appreciate and excited by, of course, yesterday's referral, or is it Tuesday? The days are going so fast. Referral by Metro of a significant homeless services ballot measure for voters to consider in May. And this is really, this regional supportive housing impact fund seeded by Kaiser Permanente with this pilot project is very complimentary to that effort with a particular focus, again, on those medically vulnerable folks and the connections with the healthcare system and Medicaid. So we're at the table with her together and really excited to see how these complementary efforts are going to move forward in alignment to really address the needs of some of our most vulnerable neighbors. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alyssa to say a little bit more, just to, I know you've been briefed on this before, but so many items come before you. We wanted to just, again, kind of recap what the project is and, again, express our appreciation to all of you and to your amazing staff, Jill Smith and her team, Elizabeth Miller. They have been incredible partners and we're so excited to work with them over the coming years to house these vulnerable folks. So thanks again.
Hi, and again, I'm Alyssa Craigie. I'm with Health Share of Oregon, which is the regional coordinated care organization for the tri-county area. We have about 320,000 members who receive their Oregon Health Plan benefits through Health Share. My friend Rich here is on the Board of Health Share and I also just wanted to express appreciation to you all, the Commission, and also to the staff at the Housing Authority, who truly, as Ruth mentioned, have been phenomenal. It's been quite a journey. Health Share came fully on board into this initiative in late fall and since then, we have managed to execute now our contracts with each of the three counties to serve with rental assistance and other anything necessary services to house 300 highly vulnerable folks in our region. So 80 of those individuals will be in Clackamas County and your staff and the partners at the table will be convening, learning together, sharing best practices. And we're super excited to be in this role going forward. So thanks again for your time and for your support of this important work.
Well, thank you. Martha, I would like to say something, then Ken.
Yeah, I do have a question about this program because I have a friend who is always on the verge of homelessness because she can barely afford her rent. What are the parameters? What are the criteria where and how someone can enter this program? She's been in contact with our Human Services for quite a while, but what she wants is rental assistance? So is, how old do you have to be? What's the, what are the particulars of this, just out of curiosity?
Sure. So I'll defer to your Housing Authority team, actually, in terms of how they would work with this particular individual. But the criteria for the grant are that you have to be 50 or older, experiencing some sort of chronic condition or disability and chronically homeless.
Okay. She would certainly fit those parameters. So I'll try and put them, put her in touch with our Housing Authority on this because...
Each county's going to be working with a different kind of network through their coordinated access, coordinated entry, homeless management system, as well as with community partners for referrals. And it really is a learning opportunity to be able to say, how can we, for example, for folks being discharged from the emergency room into homelessness, how can we bridge those gaps and build those? So we're going to be learning over the course of this project and doing an evaluation using Health Share's data capabilities to measure what are their health outcomes, how much is it costing and how can we build the business case for ongoing sustainable investment? Because we recognize the challenges with one-time pilot funding. The intent is to have this become a sustainable, ongoing source of revenue, not just for these 300 folks, but for other vulnerable folks.
Okay. And this is throughout the entire county?
Correct. Wherever, again, we would defer to Jill and her team on the specifics, but they're going to be working to identify qualified folks and get them matched with the housing and services.
Thank you.
Hey Ken, then Sonia.
I just want to say, my wife and I have been clients of Kaiser's for 50 years and I want to say thank you for stepping up and helping out on this problem. Because this is going to, it's a community effort to try and solve this problem and that you would step up and help is very much appreciated, so.
Well, thank you so much and we just appreciate, can't do it without the local partners. And Kaiser Permanente, this is a national priority for us, addressing the health needs of folks through housing stability. We're new to this space, so we're learning from the experts like Jill and others in the field and really honored to be partnering in this and other initiatives. So thank you.
Hey Sonia.
Yeah, I just want to remind our Commission, back in 2017, right after I was the Commissioner, there was Elaine who came to testify before us, 91 years old and spent time living in her van.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just unacceptable. So to have Kaiser and community partners step up to look at addressing that, it's just the most vulnerable of the vulnerable and really, really appreciate it.
Question, when do we anticipate that this will be happening? Like, when will it start?
I think the piece we've been waiting for is the sign-off from the Commission. So we have our contracts executed with Volnomah and Washington Counties as of today. We have, so, once that check request is in, we, Health Share has the funding already from Kaiser's National Office and we're ready to, we're ready to move forward.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you so much and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Pam Davis and Les Poole.
Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Pam Davis. My address is 6802 Southeast Queen Road. I'm part of unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm less than about two blocks from the city of Milwaukee. So think King Road, Linwood, right there in that area. I'm here today because my neighborhood and myself personally have what I call a livability issue. I have been experiencing nuisance bees with a beekeeper that has what I would call an excessive amount of hives on his property in this residential urban area. I'm not able to enjoy my property due to the inordinate amount of bees that traverse there daily. I've spoken with many of my neighbors and I had hoped one of them was going to arrive here today and I don't see her here. I want to assure you that I fully understand the importance of pollinators and I'm aware of the recent county resolution that Commissioner Schrader put together. I want to tell you what I've done to address this. I filed a county, what I call the county land use complaint last April. The response was that the beekeeping in my zone, R10, was for personal, non-commercial use and was permitted. I noted in this complaint that there was a significant amount of hives on the property and yet I received a, "We're not sure what we can do" kind of a response. So at this time last year, there were at least 30 hives, 30 hives on this property. After that, I reached out to the Oregon State Office and I met with, what's her name, Jen Holt, and also Joe Manesh. I want to note that I have a hot tub that I can't fully enjoy. I'm not able to sit out back with friends, have cokes or sodas or wine or anything else like that without really experiencing what would be, I would consider excessive bees. It's also so bad, believe it or not. Commissioner Schrader, you might appreciate this, but there's actually an issue in the neighborhood with the volume of bee poop on windows and cars. I also went down and personally met with this beekeeper and expressed my concerns in person. His response was to drain my hot tub, cover it with visqueen, don't drink sugary drinks on my deck, get my own hives maybe, and why did I even move into the neighborhood? So Joe Manesh got involved and noted that he had had a personal friendship with this beekeeper. I had several calls with Joe. Joe finally agreed to meet with the beekeeper. His name is Jim and this was back in June. And Joe got back to me and said he, Jim was not very receptive to any part of this discussion. And Joe also, of course, noted that as a regional beekeeping consultant, he had no enforcement powers. So Joe suggested that I could bring my complaint here to the county meeting. So I'm here because we're ramping up with the season again right now. I've taken photos as recently as just Tuesday of this week. I could count just visibly from the street at least 15 hives. He has clearly more than that on the property. I couldn't fully see without stepping onto his property, which of course I would not do. Let's see. Some of the neighbors have also noted that this beekeeper may actually be doing something nice for agriculture and maybe farming his bees out to agricultural areas, which of course that would be wonderful and, but we're, I don't live in an agricultural area. And the volume seems to exceed what I would see as personal use, which is what stated in the code. So multiple neighbors have expressed frustration and yet they're reluctant to become involved, as you might imagine, after they've learned how the beekeeper was dismissive and rude with me, making it all the more challenging for this to be addressed. Like I said, the season is just beginning. I felt like I've taken every reasonable step to try to address this. I'm here respectfully asking the Commission, how can you help me? Is there code assessment that can take place? Could somebody come out and interview and see what the situation is like out at this property? I'm also well aware of, I've done a lot of research about House Bill 2653 back in 2019 about best practices.
You need to finish up.
I'm curious about how that has been integrated into Clackamas County. I would appreciate hearing from, any initial response from you today.
Well, I suppose we can look at it. So I know the guy. He used to sell honey at our farmer's market, so it's commercial. But he quit years ago and I don't know what he's doing now. So, I mean, he quit the farmer's market years ago.
He's still selling honey at his house.
And I've heard this complaint before, the poop stuff, I'd never heard of that before. But anyway, we'll check and see if there's anything we can do. I doubt that there is, however, but we'll look. Martha?
Yeah, one of the things he should be doing is giving another larger water source for bees. Bees collect, well, these are honeybees, so they're non-native and they do sting and they are more of a nuisance, but they are not native pollinators. The native pollinators we have here are usually solitary bees that are stingless, like mason bees. So don't paint all these creatures with the same paintbrush. And honeybees have been, they come from Europe, they've been normalized here. One of the things, the problem with the hot tub is they not only connect nectar and pollen, they collect water. So you're providing a water source for them, which isn't very healthy because I'm sure you have chemicals in that water because it's a hot tub, right? So, you know, I'm wondering if there's another way he can put a larger, like even just a lot of times a small plastic pool or that's closer to the hives oftentimes will distract them from coming to you and getting them onto the, because they'll go to where the closest water source is. Usually this, the bee excrement or poop, as we might say, usually happens in this time of year when the weather warms up, they've been kind of in the hive, they've been quiet and quiescent. And then as the temperature rises, they start coming out and they've been in the hive kind of semi-hibernating, if you will, and then that's when they go out and, so that will usually stop after, you know, after it warms up and throughout the year, at least the summer, it won't keep continuing to happen. Yeah, they're a nuisance and the Chair wants me to stop talking, so I have to stop talking. But anyway. Well, you know, Ken has to leave. Okay, all right. They did this to me yesterday too, by the way, I was talking to him. I said, "Sorry." No, I know you didn't do it. And I was just like, "Sorry." So I think, I think, you know, I'd be willing to talk to the guy because I know it is a nuisance for people that aren't used to it. And this is a, this is a neighborhood that's urban, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the issue, yeah.
Just outside of Milwaukee, right on the edge.
It's an urban nuisance, yeah.
That was really a stinging rebuke, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, I get a buzz out of that.
Well, the other danger is, once you get stung by one, it only happens near the hive, but if you get stung by one, they release a pheromone and you'll get a reaction from the whole, all of the hive members. I mean, they'll come out. Usually if there are just a few of them around your water, that isn't necessarily the case. But they can be, you got to be careful around them. So, anyway, how about I do a follow-up on this?
Sure. I know this gentleman, he's really not open to suggestions, but you're welcome to.
I can try.
It's been years since I saw him.
Well, I was a beekeeper, so I can talk beekeeper to beekeeper. How, I would agree with that.
I appreciate that very much.
If you have the gentleman's address.
I do.
You might leave it with Mary here and she can send the SWAT team out. Years ago, I had somebody, I know where it is. Years ago, I had somebody with a rooster.
I've started, oh, yeah.
And I went and got the rooster myself.
I know.
So take care of the beehive thing.
Beehives, yeah. I put them in my backyard and let them go over well. I can see that.
Les.
Good morning. I was going to suggest that you let your neighbor know that you're bringing in a pig farm or maybe some chickens or something. Unfortunate, those things happen and, but that's why you're paid the big money. You're paid the big money to fix everything. That's what people think. That's what people think. I have a different opinion. I think you're paid to manage our money and our future. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. I'm here almost every week. A couple of weeks ago, I asked a question that, on a subject that we should have already had a lot more awareness of. And that was how far in, over budget were we last year? And I appreciate the response from Gary Schmidt, county administrator. And we all know where the responsibility lies, so not here to belabor that, but there's been a lot of overspending going on in general in Oregon, down at the Capitol, at Metro, and here. It's so easy to promise everything, so easy to say, "Let's pass another bond measure." And then that money for that bond measure, of course, comes from property, right? It comes from money borrowed against people's property, so it's added to their property bill. So if you were a renter, if you're someone that's on $15 an hour, you're chasing your tail. Last week, I went to Metro. Metro's an entity that's pretty much running the region. And I asked them a question and it was, "How much debt have you incurred in the last two years?" And I saw just stunned faces that I would ask such a simple question. I see the lack of involvement and public awareness, lack of public participation in a lot of what you're doing, certainly a lot of what Metro's doing. And it's really troubling, it is. How much discussion did we have on the vehicle registration fee ahead of time? How much discussion? I'm talking about legitimate discussion, outreach. How many citizens, I hope you're all taking notes, how many citizens knew that you were even going to pass a vehicle registration fee? How many citizens know that you're rubber stamping a homeless fee, service fee for Metro? Since when did Metro become the success story that we're assuming it is? Can anyone point to anything Metro has authorized or done that is a shining, glowing example? And unfortunately, because Metro controls everything, here we are with a commission that's at times unwilling or unable to stand up to them. So, there's a lot of, a lot of angst out there right now. And I hope that next week, we hear more about the bond measure for transportation and we start to hear more at the end of the meeting about the tremendously important decisions that are being made, along with the dog of the week and the other things we're doing that are fun. People need to know what's going on, so thank you as always.
Thank you. Ken's going to be, needs to leave shortly, but I just want to make one comment. We are not over budget. We have not spent over the budget. We have a balanced budget. We're being proactive to make sure that in the future, we match at least, hopefully the other way, revenue to expenses. We have not overspent the budget, not a dime. We saved $4 million in not fulfilling vacancies and Gary is going to continue that, I believe, that's up to him, the next, next six months, and that will save us $8 million. And frankly, we, if we continue that, we will be better, will be better than negative. We have not spent over our budget. Is that correct?
We have not overspent. We have a balanced budget and we live within that. Our expenses, though, are outpacing revenues, which is why we're, we're, belt tightening.
Yes. Just want to be clear. Okay, next, we have Bill Osborne and Brianna Sagdal. Bill, you're first. Oh, well, you got it.
I'll let Brianna go first.
Such a gentleman. Hi, Brianna Sagdal. Jim Bernard, Chair Bernard, excuse me, I wanted to commend you, I wanted to say thank you, well, thank you to all of you. I wanted to say thank you for testifying Tuesday on behalf of the county in the -1 Amendment for HB 4017. It's an amendment, or it's a bill, excuse me, to reappropriate funds from the 205 project to the 205 Abernathy Bridge and potentially, hopefully, without tolling. And so I want to commend you for working on options to save the county and save the residents' money. And I really appreciated that, so, thank you. And Ken, yes, I'm, I'm running for your seat, but I absolutely respect your service and I want to say thank you for that, so, thank you. I also testified on the Metro bond and I asked them to please pump the brakes until we could figure out what the funding mechanisms are. And I stand by that. I feel that eight days was not enough time for the public to be properly involved and one day, or one day for a public hearing was not enough time to have proper civic engagement. It would be nice to just wait to, but I think you guys have unanimously voted on it already. But I do believe that we need to figure out what the funding mechanisms would be. I think that's appropriate. I'm also here today to ask you, or maybe you haven't, it, I, oh, okay, okay. I'm, I'm also here today to ask you if you would please join in the other counties in the state to oppose cap and trade. And I'll just leave it there. And then lastly, I'm here on behalf of the town of Malala. We have an issue with tractor supply. It's been waiting since the end of October to open its doors. I think the idea was to get tractor supply to widen, pay for the widening of the road. This is just what I hear, I don't know the background story. However, tractor supply has been sitting vacant with full, you know, full inventory and unable to open their doors because of a very short area of sidewalk that needs to be touched in order for them to be able to open. So I don't know where we're at on that, but I would just ask if we could maybe please figure it out and see what we can do to help them get open. And that's all. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Bill?
Bill Osborne, live in Gladstone, also a candidate for county commissioner here. And I appreciate the work you guys have done. It's nice to see after teething, I'm going to do my political teething in Gladstone where there's so much discord and so many questionable things going on to see that you guys aren't up here meeting in bars in a quorum strength and discussing business or other shenanigans, which make our local newspaper frequently from Gladstone. So it is nice to see that a board can operate, even if they don't agree with each other on things, in a professional manner, so, thank you. I want to touch on a couple of things, some of them that Brianna, Brianna did as well. And I appreciate yesterday, the state of the counties, Chair Bernard's comment about people and taxes. We are just stretched and out of our minds here. There are bad things going on in the world, but the problem is, is we keep getting taxed on this or we get taxed on that. Minimum wage goes up, everybody else's wage goes up, which is great, but it pushes you into a higher tax bracket. So at the end of the day, when costs go up and the taxes come out, you're taking home less money quite frequently. All these measures, the Metro measure as well, I was at a meeting, in fact, Commissioner Schrader was in the same group I was. The community input, the people that were there who had groups who would benefit from this were quiet or supported it. Metro obviously supported it. The residents that were there were so outspoken against it that some of them had to be interrupted because just in our introduction phase, they went on and on and on about how they, how they didn't support that. And I, I would say, you know, we really need to be cautious with, with Metro. As, I, I know all of you do, I know you're building a relationship with them and I understand that, and we need to. At the same time, we've seen 475 million, I think, renewed on the last election. Before that, it was 675 million for affordable housing. And continuing to raise the cost of housing and take from our paychecks, when we look at what's affordable, it, it doesn't. I mean, we can't tax our way into prosperity no more than, one of my favorite sayings is the, "The beatings will continue until morale improves." So, we continue to raise the cost of living in this area. In Gladstone, we see some of the highest property taxes in the state, far more than Lagos, Wego, Westland, Wilsonville, Happy Valley. In fact, if you look at the numbers, we, we match Portland on some of it and Portland's the only area around that beats us on property taxes, so. I, I would hope just moving forward, I know you guys supported the Metro bond. I, I think that homelessness is not a Metro, a Metro thing to solve. I don't even think it's a county thing to solve, although the county, I think, is a big component of that. It's something we need to tackle on a state or a federal level. And I think that Metro only benefits a portion of Clackamas County. If we're going to tackle this thing, really, we need, we need bigger entities like the state or the federal government involved in it. So, and of course, mental health is, I know I've, I've talked with Commissioner Humberson there, and I'm sure the rest of you onboard. Mental health is, I think, the key component on all of it because we've all been, you know, down on our luck, we've all been close, close to homelessness. I know I have in our lives, especially when we're younger. But we have a lot of people who have mental health issues and that, you know, that just spirals into other issues and leads to a lot of the homelessness we see, so.
Thank you. I just want to, one, a couple of comments. One is that if you made $10 million, your taxes would be less, so. The other thing is that Metro is, is only the means. We, in our counties, with our expertise, know how to fix it. And I am always cautious about Metro. I'm always cautious, but they're here and they're here to stay. We have to have good relationships with them. So I appreciate that they stepped out. But again, like I said yesterday, we are property tax overburdened and we need to look in other directions. This measure does not affect property taxes, otherwise I wouldn't be there. The T-2020 measure that they're considering on transportation also does not affect property taxes. So I'll be there as long as Clackamas County gets its share, but we'll see. Ken?
I do have to go, but I wanted to share one thing briefly with you. Federal government has spent the last probably multiple decades pushing downward responsibilities on the states and counties. HUD has not built a single unit nationally in 30 years. And that is a big part of what we're having to deal with in terms of the housing issue, which is why, something that I agree with you ought to be handled at a national level because it is a national problem, is ending up on our lap. And on that note, I do have to go, Mr. Chairman, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a federal subrecipient grant agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission to provide healthy family services. Approval of a revenue grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services to assist in developing the Clackamas County Safe Visitation and Exchange Program. Approval of Agreement Number 9557 to a revenue agreement with Northwest Permanente, Kaiser Permanente, for provider services to members enrolled with health benefit plans. Approval of Agreement Number 9647 to a cooperative agreement with Oregon Health Science University for partnership in the institutional review board study. Approval to apply for a capital grant for Federal Transit Administration Bus and Bus Infrastructure Investment Program funds through Oregon Department of Transportation for Mount Hood Express vehicle replacements. Approval of a personal services contract with the Mental Health Association of Oregon for peer-delivered services for behavioral health. Approval of a personal services contract with Folk Time for adult peer support services for the Safety Net Program. Approval of a personal services contract with the Mental Health Association of Oregon for a person-centered planning support peer. Approval of a personal service contract with Folk Time for peer support drop-in center and rural outreach. Under elected officials, approval of the ORMAP Intergovernmental Agreement, Contract DOR 00120 between Clackamas County Assessors Office and the Oregon Department of Revenue for the administration of the Ad Vorelum Property Tax System. Under Human Resources, approval of the 2020 Agreement with Delta Dental for Administrative Services for Clackamas County Self-Funded Dental Benefits. Under Community Corrections, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement, Number JR 1900301, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient Northwest Family Services for Justice Reinvestment Victims 10% Program. Approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement, Number JR 9700302, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient Clackamas Women's Services for Justice Reinvestment Victims 10% Program. An approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement, Number JR 1900303, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient CASA for Clackamas County for Justice Reinvestment Victims 10% Programs. And under Technology Services, approval of a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Colton School District for a dark fiber connection. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Mary. And I ask for a motion. Oh, does any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
So moved in second, now we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Next item is the county administrator updates.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. As always, I like to share some good things that our staff does here at Clackamas County to serve the public. Today is to recognize our Department of Transportation and Development for the installation of an accessible pedestrian signal at a crosswalk in Oak Grove. So these signals relay the words, well, relay walk and don't walk information in non-visual ways to pedestrians who are, are blind or who have low vision. Our transportation staff installed this signal at the crosswalk of Oatfield Road and Oak Grove Boulevard. And visually impaired individuals from the Oregon Commission for the Blind tried out this system for us and reported, "We want to thank you for your help and swift response to our request for an accessible pedestrian signal. This makes it so much easier and safer for me. I appreciate how quickly and efficiently this was done on your part and of the, those of the electricians and everyone involved." So I want to thank our transportation staff for their work on this project, which also meets one of our county commitments to equity, providing equitable services to our public, in this case, those who are visually impaired. That's my good news for today, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to Commissioner Communications and first, here's Martha.
Yeah, I just want to let folks know, I've been in contact with Christine Drazen, the leader of the House. I have talked with her about what their plan could be in terms of really getting infrastructure that reduces carbon footprint. And she and I are in agreement that if I was down there, which I'm not, I would really be looking at infrastructure investments in our energy grid, particularly electricity. I'd be looking at energy investments with solar and wind power, but particularly the electrical grid because we cannot move to a gasoline-free or diesel-free economy unless we have the capacity in the infrastructure for the new types of transportation modalities that are coming down the peak that will actually make a big difference. So I can just say here that if, if I was down there, which I am quite frankly grateful that I'm not, because I think that we get a lot more done here, I, I do think it would behoove folks down there to be listening more deeply to one another so they can come up with a solution over an issue rather than, you know, just kind of being so frustrated with one another that they can't work. Okay? So I have been in contact with her. I think she's very, she's one of the most smart, one of the most smart and compassionate people I've had an opportunity. She's a good leader, whether or not I agree or not with a walkout is in my... or not with the walkout is, in my mind, quite frankly, immaterial. Doesn't matter. The Democrats have done it too. So, and I was there when they did it. So, we've all been guilty of kind of shenanigans down there. In any case, one of the things I did talk to her about, which I quite frankly think is more immediate and a larger concern, is the fact that we are seeing an outbreak of a very serious virus that is now going international. We're seeing quarantines. Asia is in a big pickle right now, or, you know, they're having serious outbreaks. They've had the first case in Sacramento. And right now, I keep up with what's going on with the CDC, and I get the daily updates from The Times. I've asked our public health folks to be on top of this, because right now, I don't know how prepared we are for a serious outbreak here. Japan just closed down their schools, by the way, for the month. This is something that, this is a public, major public health issue. So, as much as I think they're focusing on these other issues down there, I am really worried that that kind of drama is taking away from something that is far more significant and far more imminent. The CDC has not declared it to be a pandemic. They're being very careful about that. They're being careful because they want to see how this plays out. But I do believe that we're going to have to be, have our emergency responses with our hospital systems and our school districts. And I think we need to be putting out information on appropriate hygiene, particularly hand washing. I think we're going to need to be telling people, "If you feel ill, stay home." And there seems to be a coming consensus that it is going to appear in the United States. It already has. So, I think that's something, from my perspective, I'm a little bit more involved in, because this is people's lives, and the disease has about a 2% fatality rate evidently. And Gary, I've asked you to look into this, so can you give us any quick, any information? I know Public Health just sent us an email the other day.
Yes, your Public Health staff sent an email to you, Commissioners. We also, I believe, have a website up, and we are doing communications to the public. There are no reported cases in Oregon for now, but you're absolutely right. We need to prepare if and when there are cases here in the state. So, I'll make sure that we have more information to you and that we continue to educate the public, too.
And the other piece of this, people should, this is not a panic, but make sure you are prepared, similar to a Cascadian event, you know, I mean, make sure that you have things available should you have to be at home for an extended period of time. So, again, this is not to upset any people or make them feel fearful. What it is, is common sense to make sure that we're, you know, practicing good hygiene to make sure we stay healthy and we stay and be prepared for that. We're already seeing global disruptions. The business community yesterday at the State of the County basically asked about coronavirus and what its impact on businesses. I talked a little bit about that, but the real impact is, you know, the market is plunging right now, and there have been significant global supply chain disruptions, which means that manufacturing particularly is going to be effective because components that are coming from China because of restricted travel and also because of the disease component of people not being able to go to work. So, it is having a local impact on our businesses, and I wish I had been a little bit clearer about that the other day. So, we're keeping an eye on that. But that's the kind of serious stuff we got to pay attention to, in my mind. In any case, I want to talk a little bit about the National Association of Counties. Commissioner Fisher and I are heading out to Washington, D.C. brings together nearly 2,000 elected and appointed county officials across the nation to focus on federal policy issues that impact counties and our residents. We engage and interact with one another with congressional briefings and meetings on behalf of the counties. Clackamas County, we are in leadership there. I serve on the Board of NACO. I also serve on community and economic development, and I serve on the Task Force for International Development. One of the things, also on the large Irmond County Caucus, and we're going to be featuring conversations with federal officials and national leaders on topics, including housing, economic development, justice and public safety, and now I also believe public health. I'm anxious to get there, because I suspect they're going to have emergency briefings on what's been happening. I'll let everyone know what we do when we come to D.C. The President will be addressing the whole body. I think, what is it, Tuesday? I think he's going to be addressing the body, so we will hear directly from the source of the policies and things that have been going on with some of these issues. So, in any case, we, here at the county, have really received numerous national awards for the innovative policies and projects that we've implemented here in the county, and I'm really proud of that, and I want to thank Gary for that, too. And Mary, we've done it through the years. So, okay, I'm done. There we go. No word of the week.
Don, yeah?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I really appreciate the comments today about the Metro Homeless Services Measure. And so, I wanted to just give a little briefing to everyone out there about what this is and what it means for Clackamas County. I do hear many people refer to this measure as a bond, and I want to clarify that it is not a bond. A bond is when government borrows, usually to build things. And this would be a income tax on very high earners, a small income tax of 1% on people, individuals that make over $125,000 a year, or people filing jointly, oh, Mary, don't put that up yet. I'll talk about it. I'll tell you when, okay? Sorry. People filing jointly at $200,000 a year. So, that's, if there is a single person that is raising children, they would not begin to be taxed until they made $200,000 a year. There's also a tax, a business income tax modeled after Multnomah County's tax. All businesses with 5 million sales and less are exempt. So, very few people are at this very high earner, high income threshold within the tri-county area. So, I want to make sure that people understand this is not a bond that goes on property taxes that increase the burden for the average taxpayer. There was a real effort to look at, how can we have those that can most afford help those that can least afford? So, with that, I do want to talk about what happened on Tuesday at Metro. And Metro did refer, and so now I'll ask for just the visual of the pictures that were, so there's that picture. Let's go through. That was at the press con. This is the one that I wanted everyone to see. So, starting off the hearing before the Metro Council, Mayor Ted Wheeler, Chair Cifori, and I, through the tri-county area, addressed the Metro Council urging them to refer this measure to the ballot. And go ahead and do the next. So, I wanted to just share, oh, I'm not, this is on TV, right? Okay. The, in my message to the council, I emphasized how important it is for Clackamas County. So, while most people know, so, Mary, you can take it off the picture now. Thank you. While most people know that we are a $1.2 billion enterprise, we have 134 million of county general fund, and almost half of that goes to public safety. I believe it is 7%. Gary, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It used to be 7% of our general fund will go to human services, of which most of that goes for the basic infrastructure of how our, the lights, the costs, the building, the basic infrastructure of running government. So, I want to say, we don't have resources at the local level to provide the flexible services that are needed to get people housed and keep them housed. We opened up our wait list in 2017. 7,892 people applied, people that can't afford the cost of housing. Only 17% of those were added to the voucher wait list. For our very, very most vulnerable individuals that need permanent supportive housing, and permanent supportive housing is when there's housing and there's services right attached to that housing, we have 218 units currently with people in them. At the rate of turnover, if we stay at our current levels, it will take 20 years to help the people that are on those waiting lists. So, when you walk in any community in the region, it doesn't have to be downtown Portland. We've all seen downtown Portland. I was, we were driving to our forum yesterday for State of the County, and right on Beaver Creek Road, there was a tent with people, or a person or people, I'm not sure how many, in a tent, right on the sidewalk. So, Commissioner Schrader talked about NACO, which is always good to get information. There was a county commissioner that they call supervisors in Orange County that talked to us a couple of years ago about how they were sued because they removed people from an area where there were a lot of homeless people camping, and they couldn't stay. There was a safety issue when there was flash floods. And they got sued, and they had, they entered into a settlement agreement, which actually did exactly what this measure is doing. And this measure will provide the much-needed services, the wraparound, the case management, the addiction treatment, transportation, whatever it is that an individual needs in order to get housed and stay housed. It's the missing, missing piece. So, I wanted to explain the need. I can't not mention that right now in Clackamas County, there are 1,600 children who are homeless. So, when you talk about our, the future, our greatest asset, some people say it's our roads. I heard that yesterday. I want to, at the State of the County, I want to interrupt and say, no, 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 it's our children. Our children are our greatest asset. 1,600 children that are either unsheltered, are couch surfing, living without a place to call home, moving from place to place. That's not a way that we can promote stability for our children. So, I am supporting this measure. Our county commission provided a letter of support, which said, "Please refer this to the ballot. We at the local level cannot do this work." And I can guarantee you, we are not having Metro call the shots here. We have been at the table making sure that the framework, the governance framework, the services framework is what we can do at the local level. We will be doing local implementation plans. We will have robust community outreach to define this in the way that works for Clackamas County. So, I want to encourage everyone to get information. Go online to Hear Together, sign up, get information, get information about the campaign. This is going to happen very, very fast. I can tell you, a lot of research and science went into this. These are multiple reports over the last two years that we've been working on to define this. This is not quick. It may seem quick, but a lot of work and a lot of stakeholders, business community, philanthropists, community members, religious community, service providers, elected leaders from across the region. We have been working very hard on this issue that our constituents tell us is their number one concern. So, hopefully, you will join me in supporting this. Thank you.
I want to just-
Go ahead.
-help her with one thing. You forgot to mention the 10-year sunset.
Oh.
I think that's important.
That is important, that in 10 years, this will sunset unless the voters reapprove it, and there will be an opportunity to really look at what the situation is. In 10 years, it may be a different situation, and the measure may need to be revised. I can tell you, it costs almost twice as much to, for our public safety system to pay for homelessness than it does to house people. And so, once we divert the resources and we're not pitting people in and out of our jails and in and out of our emergency rooms, we will see savings. So, will we need this level of investment? Maybe not. We will evaluate that and send it back out to the voters if necessary. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, Commissioner, I appreciate all your hard work on this issue. We did talk about it at MPAC last night. However, I was a little concerned that my colleagues at MPAC don't seem to have a handle on what we do in rural communities. And so, I pointedly asked them if these dollars were going to be used for, could be used for transportation, because we have homeless people in rural communities that don't have access. And we have a large Hispanic population in our rural communities that don't have access. So, they all seemed surprised they couldn't give me an answer. I'm concerned about access. I'm concerned about the fact that evidently, I left with the feeling that as much as we talk about regions, that the rest of this county is not actually included in that definition. And while I am absolutely behind referring it to the ballot, I think those kinds of questions need to be clearly answered, because someone who has been always involved in social justice, the Fellowship of Reconciliation, working with our Hispanic community when I lived in Camby to make sure they had housing and things, I am very worried that the urban centeredness of this is not going to necessarily be helpful to our entire population. That concerns me. And I think we need to figure out a way to remedy that if people are going to want to support this kind of a measure, because my understanding is it's an income tax decrease, increase, but people who are living outside of the metro boundary will also be required to pay that. But yet-
No, they won't.
That's not what I've heard. So, we need to clarify that.
People that live or work in the metro-
In the metro boundary, yes.
Within the metro region are the ones that will be paying the tax.
Right. But if they live in Estacada and they work in the metro boundary, they pay the income tax. So, they're going to be feeling as if their wealth is being transferred and not even actually helping the area where they are directly living. And like I said, I'm really happy to have this referred, but I also think people need to be questioning whether or not we're setting up inequities, because that's what I worry about the most. We talk about equity. We talk about diversity. We talk about people of color. But I'm not feeling right now as if those other communities are going to be adequately served. I'd like to at least have some confirmation that there's going to be transportation movement and access. And I also understand that our staff, of course, would really like to see this happen, because they deal with it every day. You perfectly described the need of what we're dealing with, which is huge. People on waiting lists, not enough housing, all of those pieces of it. But they need to be given an opportunity to serve the entire county, and that's what I'm concerned about. And I'm also concerned, I don't know how much money we're getting, and where do we stand in the, in that distribution of dollars in terms of what our county-
I can answer some of those questions.
Okay.
21.3% of, 21.33% of the dollars based on our population that lives in Metro. And Commissioner Schrader, you are absolutely right. Clackamas County is uniquely positioned because half of our residents live within the metro boundary, half do not. So, need to make sure we understand, this is a citizen-led, community-led effort. It is politically feasible within the metro region, and it is up to us as the leaders of Clackamas County, if we direct our county, we had this talk this morning, Gary Schmidt and I, because we have this. We have Performance Clackamas, and this says that our goal is to reduce chronic homelessness and to reduce, prevent homelessness for children and families. So, if this is what our goal is, what we need to do is make sure that any flexible dollars that we have, we reallocate to the rural areas. That's something that I fought really hard to make sure, that while we aren't displacing dollars, we can absolutely use them within our jurisdiction. And we need to look at how we can promote increase in resources in our rural communities. I mean, you are absolutely right.
Yes. Because I don't, I'm very worried with Metro's attitude that we're not seen as a whole county. And that's what I left away thinking last night. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. But it's not because I don't, because I don't understand the need and the larger piece that we're going to have to support here. But I think those are the kind of questions that the public's going to ask, and we need to have answers to.
I know, and we need to work really hard. This is step one. Okay?
Year two, they're going to reevaluate the distribution. I talked to Gary when I first heard about this issue, that we need to make sure that in this budget process, we take those flex dollars and invest them in the rural community first.
Very limited that we have.
Budget them.
We have $1.2 million of general fund that goes towards this in our budget. We have $1.2 million of general fund that goes towards this in our budget.
And, and then there's a, a bunch of other small sources. So a couple of things. One thing is that as far as the VRF, we tried eight years to pass something to fund roads. We also had, I, I would say thousands, might be thousand, I, I physically didn't count the people that we talked to about the VRF. I know Ken did, and I did, all over the county, and once we explained that, that the other two counties get all this money, we got nothing. And in order to get some money, you have to have some contribution on our side. We didn't have that. So some projects that, I think Portland got 17 million, and the only roads they have are the bridges. They don't have any roads. So, and we have 1,800 or 1,400 miles worth of roads. See, if Ken was here, he could correct us a little way.
He remembers every number.
One thing, in the T2020 measure, there, I'm going to be fighting for students have free transit. That's one interest of some folks. But today, I, I wanted to thank the sheriff for reversing his decision to dissolve search and rescue. I think that was a good decision. He worked that out with the, with the very, with the Portland Mountain Rescue. I hope he does that with the RESCA, RESTA. And I was very concerned about increasing our liability, and of course, the money to pay for this. And thank you for the work you did in bringing this issue to us, and, and so I'm, I'm very happy. I'm glad that the citizen, citizens of Clackamas County had an opportunity to weigh in on this issue and that he made the right decision. As far as cap and trade, frankly, I was down in the legislature. I asked them to pull this and move it to a long session, because we have community corrections money that's tied up. We have locks that are tied up. Evidently, there's a sunset on a 1% tourism tax. That won't happen if we don't do this, and I, and there's hundreds of other possibilities. I just also wanted to mention how happy I am that our bill with Happy Valley and NCPRD was the very first bill that passed, and that is behind us, at least as soon as we write the check. And Parks District can actually start planning for the future. We've been held up for a number of years on that issue, and let's see, so. I guess that's it, and we'll go to the dog. Mary looked at me like, "Don't forget the dog." I don't usually do the dog, and this was Ken's job. Baron, who's a nice, older gentleman with award-winning smile. It's Baron. Baron is a 14-year-old German Shepherd Rottweiler mix who is on the lookout for a forever retirement home. He has spent much of his time living outside, and while he likes hanging out with people, he's interested in finding a yard or a farm or a barn where he can spend much of his time supervising his people, basking in all the things outdoorsy. Even at age 14, still has a, has a skip in his step and enjoys going for walks with his family and there at the shelter. He thinks that being a pet is pretty fantastic, is happy to meet new people, and is looking forward to finding his forever home and people. For more information about Baron and other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And with that, we are adjourned.